If you would all stand, Michelle, would you come and give us the invocation?
Thank you. Good morning, all. Let us pray. God of all, God of all creation, God of all hope, God of all wisdom, Lord, we thank you for this morning. We thank you for this day, for the blessings that each new day brings, blessings that come even in the midst of challenges and difficult times. And, Lord, this morning, I want to thank you for all those who are called to public service. I thank you for all gathered together here in this room this morning. We ask your guidance on the decisions and discussion and discernment that needs to take place today. And, Lord, we thank you for all who serve our city, this beautiful corner of creation that we have the good fortune to live in. Lord, I thank you for all who serve our city in matters of finance and administration. Thank you for all who serve our city as caretakers of our buildings and streets and parks and public places. I thank you for all of our first responders, ready to help those in need. And, Lord, as we pray this morning, we know that there are communities around our country that are in strife, and we pray for them. We pray for healing and recovering in the places where they are. And, Lord, we ask you to lead us all to work for the common good, what is true and right. In your name we pray. Amen.
I thought it would be good if the police chief could lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Vok, if you would call the roll.
Mr. Old.
Here.
Ms. Graves.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mayor Winger.
Hey.
Just here.
All right, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we are going to remove item 2C3 Attorney Chef Wright to discuss utility matters. He will not be in attendance today.
Okay, is there any council members that would like to make any modifications?
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Winger, would you like to... Okay, we'll move forward. We'll go ahead and do our proclamations, and then, following the proclamations, we'll have public comment. The Historic Preservation Month is first up.
Okay, is Ms. Atwell, Ms. Brady here, Ms. Stanbridge? And anyone else who'd like to come up?
We actually have a large group.
Ms. Hoffman, yes, please bring them up.
Large group, and first anticipated. Let's get back to it. We've got the Heritage Center, the Cultural Council, the Local Society, Main Street.
Wow.
Okay, so I'll read, and then we'll hear all the fantastic things about the month. Okay. So, "Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism promotion, growth management, neighborhood revitalization, fostering local pride, and maintaining overall community character. And historic preservation encourages community reinvestment, saving resources, and promoting socially, culturally, and economically rich communities. And it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has helped to shape us as a people. And the theme for Historic Preservation Month 2015 in the city of Vero Beach is valuing our sense of place, discover, preserve, cherish, co-sponsored by the City of Vero Beach Historic Preservation Commission, the Indian River County Historical Society, Main Street Vero Beach, Vero Heritage, Inc., and the Indian River County Archive Center, the Indian River County Cultural Council, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida declares Historic Preservation Month be established in the month of May 2015 in recognition of the vital role historic preservation plays in our community."
Thank you very much. As you can see, we have a lot of supporters for our historic fabric in the city of Vero Beach. Just to let you know, Historic Preservation Month was established in 1973, and I thought this was an interesting fact because I was one year old at the time. It was established by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. It's celebrated by communities throughout Florida and throughout our nation, and it gives us the opportunity to reflect upon our rich local heritage and also the significant historic and cultural resources that help shape our city's character. On behalf of the city's Historic Preservation Commission and the co-sponsors, of course, we thank you for this proclamation and celebration of Historic Preservation Month. Thank you.
You guys want to come up for a photo? Yeah.
Thank you. We've got to take your moments. Thank you.
Squeeze in a little bit. Hey, Ruth.
Thank you so much for all your work. Thank you.
I'll get a coffee.
All right, next proclamation is Mental Health Awareness Month.
And it my pleasure to read that this morning, Art. And group for mental health, if you'd like to come to the podium, please. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Vero Beach, and the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health service places a critical responsibility on our community. And mental health is absolutely necessary, and it is appropriate that a month be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards the overall mental health and well-being of our community. Mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, but with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And during Mental Health Awareness Month, we all need to reaffirm our commitment to building our understanding of mental illness, increasing access to treatment, and ensure those who are struggling to know they are not alone. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach does hereby proclaim May 2015 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect mental health, and recognize Sun Coast Mental Health Center for providing research-based assessment, counseling, support services, and for being dedicated to community-based and family-centered care to help ensure success and safety for every child. Yeah. Can I say something?
Yes. Thank you, Pilar, and City of Vero Beach City Council for this proclamation and recognition of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. I am Art Chaska, and I'm the CEO of Sun Coast Mental Health Center. Proud to have with me today our Board President, Gabrielle Radcliffe Esquire, our Lead Case Manager in Indian River County, Mr. Al Smith, and Mr. Frank Jensen, who is our Board Treasurer. Sun Coast Mental Health Center is a 501(c)(3) four-county organization. Here in Indian River County, we are located on Old Dixie Highway in Vero Beach, just south of 16th Street. At Sun Coast Mental Health Center, we understand the importance of prevention, early detection and identification, and treatment of mental health disorders. Statistics reveal that one in five youth between the ages of eight and 18 have a mental health disorder severe enough to cause a significant impairment in their day-to-day lives, one in five, and that includes while they're in school. Children with a mental health disorder are failing more classes, they're earning a lower grade point average, they're missing more days of school, and they are being retained at grade level far more than students with any other disability. Statistics also show that approximately 50% of our students who are 14 and older who have a mental health disorder will drop out of high school. And again, that is the highest of any other disability rate. And if you look at those students with a mental health disorder that drop out of high school, 75% of those people will be arrested within five years of dropping out of high school. As an aside, I'm extremely proud that here in Indian River County, Sheriff Lor and Judge Cox and the entire Mental Health Collaborative has really helped establish a mental health court in Indian River County, long overdue, and it'll really help in this cause. The most staggering statistic to me is that when you look at youth age 24 and younger in our country, 11 of them every day will choose to end their life through suicide. It's very clear to me that we need more awareness, education, and funding for mental health services. Untreated or undertreated mental health disorders can ruin lives or end lives, but with proper treatment, people lead very productive, happy, and healthy lives. At this point, I would like to just briefly introduce our Board President, Ms. Gabrielle Radcliffe, Attorney at Law.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you very much for this proclamation. As a criminal defense attorney throughout the Treasure Coast, I see everyday juveniles who are untreated becoming part of the system, undiagnosed and untreated, and even more adults who, had they been diagnosed and treated as juveniles, would not have been part of the system. The mental health courts are fantastic, it's great that they've been established. They need to be used more and have more people refer to them. And I'm proud to be President of this board that promotes awareness and acceptance and treatment of mental illness. Thank you very much.
Just in closing, our Chief of Police is showing what it means to protect and serve. He's going to actually take our photo for us when we come left. And thank you very much on behalf of Sun Coast Mental Health Center.
Okay, the next proclamation up is the Relay for Life. And I'll go ahead and read that one. volunteer health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem through research, education, advocacy, and service. And Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's unique, fun-filled team event to increase awareness in the community while raising much-needed funds for the fight against cancer. And the heartfelt love and caring shared by friends and family during the Relay for Life is truly inspiring by celebrated survivors remembering those who have lost their battle with cancer and uniting our community. And long before the last walkers approached the finish line, new friends have been made, old friends have been hugged, and all the hearts have been touched by the magic of Relay for Life. And the Indian River Unit of the American Cancer Society will hold their annual Relay for Life under the Oaks at Riverside Park on May 19. Therefore, the City of Vero Beach does hereby declare May 9, 2015, as Relay for Life Day and encourage the community to support the American Cancer Society and their efforts to help everyone who has been touched by cancer.
Thank you. My name is Ala Kramer, and I'm this year Relay for Life, the beach's chairperson. And here is Doi Demstik, who is American Cancer Society Relay for Life Specialist, and one of my committee members, Anselma Puente. In May of 1985, Dr. Gordy Klat walked and ran for 24 hours around the track in Tacoma, Washington, ultimately raising $27,000 for the cause to fight cancer. That year, 300 of his patients, supporters, and family members watched as he did that. A year later, 340 supporters joined the overnight event. Since these first steps, the Relay for Life movement has grown into a wild world phenomenon, and it takes place across the country and around the world. Nowadays, we have about 5,000 Relay for Life events happening across the world in over 20 countries. Most importantly, it raises millions of dollars to fund our lifesaving programs of research, advocacy, and service. Today, about $5 billion have been raised already towards this cause. Dr. Klat, who was the founder of Relay for Life, died in August of 2014 at age of 75 from heart failure and battling stomach cancer. But his dream continues, and this year we celebrate 30 years of Relay for Life. I'd like to invite everyone to be a part of the Relay for Life either by joining a team, make a donation, and/or come to the event that will be this coming Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. under the Oaks at the Riverside Park. Doi, would you like to add something?
Thank you so much for that proclamation.
You guys want to take a picture?
Yes.
All right. And then for National Police Week, Mr. Old, I believe you've got the last one. Chief Curry, would you come forward?
Morning.
Morning. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 10 through May 16 as National Police Week, and whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers now serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Vero Beach Police Department, and whereas law enforcement officers are guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free people, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, as law enforcement officers deserve, our appreciation for the work they do and citizens fulfill an important civic responsibility by supporting their work to protect our community so that we can achieve a better and more secure future for our children and grandchildren. And whereas, the names of the 126 United States law enforcement officers who made the ultimate sacrifice and were killed in the line of duty in 2014 will have their names engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Now, therefore, the City Council of Vero Beach, Florida does hereby proclaim the week of May 10 through May 16, 2015, as National Police Week, and call for our citizens of the community to especially honor and show our sincere appreciation for the City of Vero Beach police officers by deed, remark, attitude, to show their thanks to our men and women who made it possible for us to leave our homes and family in safety each day and to return to our homes knowing they are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones, property, government, against all that would violate the law. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, on behalf of all the men and women of the Vero Beach Police Department, I certainly want to thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, and all the council members for this proclamation this morning. And as you said, the 10 through the 16 is law enforcement week nationwide. Unfortunately, there's been 39 killed in the line of duty throughout this country already this year. It's actually down 13%, but I stand here every year and say one's too many, as we all know. Unfortunately, the last individual that was killed was a 25-year-old New York City officer who he and his partner drove up to an individual that was messing around with his waistband, and they drove up to him, he pulls out a gun, shoots him in the face, and he dies a couple of days later, which was, I believe, yesterday or so. That's the things, even though that's New York City, that's the things that we have to deal with day in and day out. And we even deal with things like that here in the city of Vero Beach. And I'm very, very proud of the men and women here at the police department, especially in light of what we've been witnessing across our country in the last several months to a year or two. Just the professionalism that they have, of course, the training. It all starts with who we hire, but they're a great group of men and women that's so professional. Fortunately, the community that we're in, we hear from the community quite a bit. I get emails, I get cards thanking them for what they do, even if it's a change in attire. So we get that quite a bit, fortunately, and I'm just so very proud to lead this group, and they make me look, I hope they make me, and I think they make me look pretty good. So, thank you again very much. There is a wreath placement ceremony Monday in front of the courthouse. I believe you may have gotten the flyer, but it's at 10:00 a.m. on Monday, and that's our annual wreath placement ceremony. It's a multi-agency event right in front of the county courthouse. Please attend if you're able to make that as well, and we'll be there to see everyone. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
She's due in August, and she's our public information officer.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, also be very proud of the police department. It's not only the routine issues that they have, the car chases and the bank robberies we seem to have around in our community, but also the community outreach and the participation in so many functions and activities that really create the environment and the mood of our community. And I think that they deserve a lot of credit, just because a lot of that is done on their off-time as well. Chief Curry's involved in virtually everything that you can possibly be involved in. And then they also do responses when the, and the historical society and some of the work that they have done there to address little issues that are, you know, sort of particular to that particular use. We have our officer that goes out there and talks to the folks and gives them the confidence that we are there to support and help resolve what those issues are. But the real professionalism of the department cannot be underlooked and overstressed at any time.
Certainly agree. We'll move on with public comment, and if Ms. Deborah Atwell with the Horace Historic Preservation Committee would come.
Deborah Atwell, 1935, 25th Avenue. Good morning, Mayor, council members.
Good morning.
Vero Beach friends. I had originally seen myself walking down to you this morning with a single piece of paper, with an image on it and some figures, so that you could look at a picture and comment on a budget request, our first one in six years. And then I was ready to do a little begging, if necessary, hopefully not, and that would be it. And then about the middle of the day yesterday, I thought, wait a minute, this is a council meeting, this isn't a preservation meeting, they get people. So it's an opportunity to educate and to share that message. So that's when I made a big mistake, and I decided not to do a simple PowerPoint, which is easy to do, but I discovered a program called Keynote. Have you ever tried that? Keynote gets you halfway through, and you think you're going to win an award because it is just the most amazing thing. You think everyone's going to love this, it's going to change the course of history, and then it refuses to cooperate with anything, and you can find no information. It won't give you anything back. You start calling every high school senior you know going else. And at that point, I just wept. I thought, now what? So we're going back to the prairie approach, delivering information. And to do that, maybe in a fun way today, I thought I would ask Anna and also Ruth to come and get involved and just casually be ready to make a comment and to pass paper around. One thing that I hate to do is to come in here and have piles of paper, literal trees, in everybody's lap. Most of that gets pitched, maybe it gets recycled, we hope. It just disturbs me. So we're going to just try to use as little paper as possible. And on that note, what I thought I would do is let you all look at the pretty ones one at a time. We're going to pass them like we're in, you know, fourth grade. And then when it gets to the end, I'll have maybe Anna, would you position yourself over there and then pass it out here. If you guys want to move forward, we can have the real kumbaya. I mean, if you're interested in looking at pretty pictures and not falling asleep. It's going to be hard to pass, and we're all separated. Ms. Vok, could we put those on the, put it on the overhead?
Sure.
Really? Even if it's not, they're not prepared slides, I can just... Yeah. All right, well, we can do it that way, too. Then we could all try it and... I didn't come early to discuss this with Tammy, so I prepared to give her a rose. You'll never guess where I got that.
Thank you.
I mean, if this doesn't take more time just to turn on and put up...
Pretty easy thing to do.
All right. Ruth, come to me anyway, and Anna, too, because you can, or come, and we can all kind of add our comments, because I was just going to do this shooting from the hip, my favorite style. I know that this is one of, we have a mic here. We'll put them on for you and then... Oh, all right. Face up? Yeah, I guess. Thank you. This will be yours, then. I don't need it. Come up here, you love signs. Right. And I also have some questions about the state and the national signage, because sometimes they're a hybrid. So I thought, since the topic today...
Swing the microphone.
Since the topic today, thank you, is our first local designation sign for historic properties. I thought we'd just do a quick overview on historic signs in general so that people would have a better appreciation of historic signs when they see them and have a better appreciation for perhaps the background and the work that goes into them. So on that note, we have one that's easily recognizable, and this is a state sign. And the historic preservation signs generally come in three divisions. We have the federal ones, we have the national ones, we have the state ones, and we have local ones. And then you have a miscellaneous category that we'll also get to. All right, we can go ahead to the, here is one example of a, most, this is a state sign. So now we're going to go, we're going to begin with the national ones. They've been floating around since 1966 when they passed the National Historic Preservation Act and established the national register, and it now has over a million properties. Most of the national plaques look like the rectangular one on the top. They have... They have a very fancy landmark plaque in addition on the bottom. Here is an example of a really over-the-top national sign, so you do have some liberty with design, but normally they're not this elaborate. But that one certainly is beautiful. Here we have proof that they can be put anywhere and that also people look at them, unless this guy's a plant. And also, you can find them in some rather unusual places. The state signs also have some variety, but typically they started out looking like this. And I think, Ruth, was that the earliest crest that they used, the more of the regency?
Yes. Then they went to the state of Florida, the state of Florida, and we have one of those.
Okay, here?
Yes.
Okay, so that one was...
...replaced, they discontinued using that one?
It said 70s on it, so I'm thinking...
Yes, they discontinued that mainly because it was a very busy type, and we have several here in the county, one over at the Women's Club for the city of Verro Beach, that's over at the Verro Beach Women's Club, and we had it cleaned not too long ago.
Good. Well, I'm glad we're doing our sign maintenance. And here is another one that also demonstrates that design. This one's up south of the inlet, where the 1715 fleet had such a bad day. This, we know that this is a state sign, because it has our state historic preservation officer hugging it, who was here to deliver a certified government workshop. And afterwards, we went around and visited these signs. I did not realize, Michael Zeminy, he's wonderful, did not realize that he really does all of this work in Tallahassee, and never gets to see them in the field, very seldom. So it was a very emotional moment for him to go around and to actually visit signs that he spent so much time approving and wording and seeing created. So that was, that was a great time, and Ruth, of course, was abundantly helpful.
So while we're looking at these of baseball and Dodger Town, I know it's, we worked tirelessly to get, to get this designation. Could you give the public some idea, yeah, of the time involved, the process and the time involved?
These two can speak to that. It is an ordeal.
Oh, yes, you have to do the background research, and of course, that has to go with your text to Tallahassee. And then to get this wonderful history that's sometimes 100 years old into 1,235 characters is very difficult. So I know when I did the Roseland sign that we just dedicated a few weeks ago, the ladies up there ended up with three pages of text, and then we had to reduce it down to 1,235 characters. So, but then they have a review board, and Anna sat through the review board for Osceola Park. It is usually three members in Tallahassee, and they review your text, and then all the backup material, and they have to match. And then they, and Anna had no problem whatsoever with her Osceola Park, and neither did I with ours, but we had a lady in Miami who was doing one for the Port of Miami, and they felt it was more of an advertisement than a historical sign. It had something to do with the Allabour of Florida, I'm sure. So they ended up redoing that one in that review. So it does get a lot of scrutiny, and when you finish with a text of 1,235 characters, you really feel like you've accomplished something.
Thank you.
It's very interesting, because is this, because the committee is made up of members throughout the state of Florida that serve on this committee. There's archaeologists, architectural historians, and historians, too, that are actually reviewing the text.
The, our Osceola Park sign we referenced displays the newer icon, the newer logo, the cleaner one. And this one, I understand that even though this is a state sign per se, it has national mention on it. So are these just considered hybridized signs? You don't use a...
No, it's just state historic marker. It's just mentioning the National Register district.
But we have no other marker that demonstrates that information, that's just, it's on this one.
In that neighborhood, no. That's the state historic marker, it's a Florida heritage site.
What is coming up on the cement pillar that looks like it's going to hold some plaque of some sort in Jacoby Park?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Well, that'll be a mystery. In the miscellaneous category of signs, we have signs, plaques like this one. Abraham Lincoln stood here, that's, that's a new one. At least he wasn't sleeping. And so some of these signs are just placed by various groups, military groups, people that want to commemorate. Here's one that you may have seen, honoring Waldo Sexton. I mean, that would still be considered a historic plaque, even though it is not issued by any government agency and hasn't been vetted. One of the most interesting plaques that loosely falls into that category, except they are more accredited, the Preservation Society of Charleston is a preservation recognition body, and yearly, they present this award to the best renovation of a property in Charleston. And I think this is worth noting, because they, the society, went to some great lengths to name this award. They definitely went without sleep for a while. The Carolopolis, which doesn't sound like it would have anything to do with Charleston, is in fact a term that combines Greek and Latin, and Carol meaning Charleston, and opolis, you know, the acropolis, the city. So what they were attempting to do was convey the fact that the scholars in Charleston, at the time, the colonial scholars, studied both of those languages, and that in fact, the architecture in Charleston is mostly Greek and Roman Revival. So they, you know, it's one of those things where if you look at it and you know what you're looking at, it makes sense and it's more meaningful. So that's an example of a group or a city that really took it to task and put some time and thought into it. Others become very involved in design when we're discussing local plaques. I love this one of Denver. Nice and clean, enduring design. Philadelphia, also. No one would ever get tired of looking at that or having it by their front door. This one you've probably seen me with before, the Bluegrass Trust, again, issued by an outside agency instead of the city of Lexington. The trust takes care of this, the recognition, and here it is, actually in front of a Henry Clay House that I was fortunate enough to live in briefly with my poor beleaguered-looking dog sitting there. So that's where most of these plaques are positioned when we're talking about local designation. This is also a Kentucky plaque. They really like that logo theme, the monogram theme. If we start looking at Florida's, we have everything you can imagine, just whatever you want, it's here, full freedom to create whatever you want. Tallahassee decided they wanted to play it safe. They did a very conservative, predictable sign that almost looks like a street address sign compared to the Keys. Got to love the Keys, made out of ceramic, very pretty. They captured the essence of the place. I, the other ceramic one, you can make them locally out of anything you want. Detroit could make one out of a hubcap if they wanted to. Coral Gables also does a ceramic one. Try finding a photograph of one, it's like top secret, you got to go down there and look at one. I guess they're trying to lure us down there. But if you look in the corner of this letter, you can kind of see the design, and it's, they're all about the same size, about eight or nine inches, and it's muted, beautiful colors, and, you know, tropical, and captures the essence of Coral Gables, I think. You'll notice in the letter, too, and in other ones that I've examined, that it's part of the designation process, where they will send you a letter saying, congratulations, your property is acceptable, and it is deemed historic, and, you know, you may purchase a plaque. So it's, it's part of the process.
Do you have any conceptual design of what you think Verro Beach should be? I mean, are you...
We knocked ourselves out, almost like the Preservation Society of Charleston. I think that we could probably have lunch with them and they would like us. And we went, ultimately, what we used was, you know, in the room with us, it was so close, we could have touched it. But no, 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 we didn't do, we didn't use that method. We looked at every other possible icon object. And then finally, in the process of looking, I had discovered how beautiful the fonts were on vintage coins. I thought, coins, coins, where have I heard about coins before? Duh! So it just seemed, suddenly the lights went on, it seemed to make perfect sense to utilize Spanish coin.
Hmm.
I mean, yes.
Treasure coast.
Why not? And so also, there's an analogy there, too, that we can use to illustrate what we're doing here, part of the preservation process. So here, here is the coin that basically we borrowed most of the features from. There are gold and silver coins, reales, and we're going to make it look like the gold doubloon that people are familiar with, except it's really going to have the features of the silver coin. But it's going to be cast in bronze, it'll look aged, it's not going to be quite this bright. This was a design that was, we decided was a little too intricate. Still lovely. Charleston, eat your heart out. And it's going to, it's going to look like this, hopefully. So our intention here, of course, again, is just to make something that isn't trendy, isn't fatty, something that relates strongly thematically to the regional history, and something that people are really going to enjoy and take great pride in seeing. Local designation plaques are unique in that all preservation plaques are informing, but this one, when a community develops their own and they start to utilize them, they really become a badge of honor. It's one of the best ways to get that message out effortlessly, because once people start seeing those, it trains them to say, if they see something that looks interesting, attractive, they will say, there's something about that place, and then they'll go, oh, look, it has one of those, yeah. That's, that's one of our best. So it's, they're, they're, they're hard to beat, you know, we, at this point, we're ready for it.
Yeah, but the board generally took the idea...
Anna, Anna, my apologies, I got to sign, the microphone's not working.
Okay. I just got it, I think.
Oh, okay.
So this is at the same moment, thank you. The board went with the idea of having a symbol, not really saying this is a local landmark, but more of a symbol, and that was the consensus of the board. And so, as I understand, where the 1790 is will be the built date of the building, and then there is in small print, Verro Beach on there. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, yes, Anna. Yeah, we, and some of the local designation plaques, especially in Florida, you know, tend to look like this, where you've just got a lot going on, kind of like the city of Verro Beach. And they really should become so iconic, the design, that you don't even have to read anything, you understand implicitly why they're there and what they mean. So anyway, the next thing I'd like to just show you is another Spanish coin. The reason this coin had the cross on it, you know, you think it's a crucifix when you see a Spanish coin, but it's like early attempts at perforation lines. And so this is truly how they made change then, you just [khr] and cut the thing, and then you had four pieces of, one piece of whatever the value of this was. And the coins were still valued for weight. So I think there's another analogy to be made. If we are using these plaques, the coin plaque, at the time, one of the things that unscrupulous people did was, when times were hard, they would shave the coin. And that's why when you see them in shops, a lot of them look highly irregular, and it's not because they've been on the bottom of the sea so much, but that people were chopping them off and trying to maybe make another small coin on the side, or change, making change. And then it devalued the coin itself, because they were weighed, if they looked like they weren't going to, you know, be the appropriate weight. So I think that sends a message to, an important message to people who decide to purchase and live in a historic home, if that, the home is like the coin when it's minted. And so if you're going to keep chopping at it and changing it, it devalues the value of the treasure. And so it's, one of the responsibilities of this commission is to let people know that they can still have what they want and make it bigger. You can add on to that thing while being respectful to the original design, and, and everyone's happy in the end. These are some of the houses that I think would qualify, these are the only, I could grab my grab this morning quickly, but I think without studying them too closely, these are houses we see all the time, we live in a small town. But many of these, I'm sure Anna and Ruth would agree, would easily qualify for designation, as well as, surprisingly, people say, are Central Beach, mid-century modern, and I don't think so much, because this comes to mind, but, but these homes are also eligible and part of our legacy.
Deborah, what would you like for us to do? I'm trying to keep things moving along, but...
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're finished. I have a, I did not bring the statement from the foundry, but I will send it to you, and we'll do, I guess, a formal request for, to include it in the budget, which is any day.
Okay.
Isn't it pending? It's coming up soon?
Well, we do, yeah, we've got our sessions here in a couple of months.
So I will have, I'll be kept in the loop, I'll send you the information, and then I will appear once again in case there are any questions. There's a fabrication fee that is steep, in order to produce something like this and make it look good, they have to do a thoroughly sand casting process where you have the three-dimensional figure. And then after that, the plaques will be under $200 for purchase, probably around $180.
So you're thinking we'll go ahead and do the casting fees, and then what the...
We will do the casting fees. Property owners will, will purchase the plaques themselves at this point, and we will probably have three made for, for city properties. The more you place in an order, the more of a discount they'll give you, because they're all essentially the same, except for the number, except for the date.
And I'll just add, having worked as the historic planner for the city of Fort Pierce, we had just that simple bronze plaque, and the cost was over $100 for people to purchase. So it is in, in that range, even though this is a little more intricate, it's, it's still in that same range of the basic local register plaque.
And some of them are ridiculously expensive, approaching $300. So I, you know, I just don't think everyone is going to justify that kind of expense, so this should, this should work.
It's a wonderful design. I think you guys did a great job, absolutely great job.
Thank you, thanks, thank you.
Be very unique to Verro Beach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, David, my apologies, I got to get the caffer in first. Mr. Conrad and Cindy?
And on a side note, the plaque in Jacoby Park is going to be for Jordan Sprinklers for all the work they did. That's what's going on the cement.
Put your microphone away in case you need it again.
Good morning. We, on March the 26th, 2015, and you should have received your copy, completed our audit and our comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFER, for the fiscal year that ended last September... last September, 2014. And today, we have with us Mr. Ron Conrad, who is the partner in charge of our audit from our new audit firm, Cherry Beckett, and he will be presenting an overview of some of the results of the audit. But before he does that, I'd like to mention just a couple of things that I consider to be highlights of the audit and the financial statements in areas that have been the focus of concern in recent years. The first would be with regard to our OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability. As a result of a change that the city made in our administration of the retiree healthcare benefits, specifically with regard to Medicare Supplement Plans, our OPEB liability decreased by almost $20 million, and dropped from $56 million last year down to a total of $36 this year. So that's a fairly significant change that was brought about just by a fairly simple change in administration and the rules of the plan. Another thing that happened was the funded position of our pension plans improved, our general employee plans' unfunded liability decreased by about $3.7 million, and the plan is now 67% funded, up 5% from last year, which is fairly significant. And the police pension plan, the unfunded liability decreased about $1 million, and that plan is now at a funded ratio of 84%, which is a 3% improvement from last year. On May the 14th, as we normally do, the Finance Commission will have a much more in-depth discussion of the results of the audit in the CAFER, and then they'll make any recommendations they have back to you for consideration for next year. But I will tell you, they have already spent some time formulating a recommendation regarding OPEB and the potential to fund an OPEB trust next year that would also further, you know, kind of mitigate the liability. So you'll be getting that formal recommendation from them. Did you have a...
Yes, yes, as I said, I, I think it's thrilling to hear that our OPEB liability has gone from $56 million to $36 million. And I wish for the, for the sake of the public, you'd explain a little more how we were able to achieve this dramatic reduction.
Up to last year, the retirees from the city who receive a city subsidy of their health insurance had the option to remain on the city's health insurance plan regardless of their age. Our original intention was to make it mandatory, if they were over 65, for them to take a Medicare Supplement Plan. It turned out that we were not able to make it mandatory, because for those who were already over 65, if they then switched in a certain timeframe, they were going to pay a hefty penalty. But what we did do instead was we made available to them a Medicare Supplement Plan that was substantially cheaper than remaining on the city's plan. And so, even though it became optional for those people already over 65, there was a mass migration in enrollment from the city's more expensive plan to the cheaper Medicare Supplement Plan, based on the price, and also some education for the participants about, you know, the benefits of being on that plan besides just being lower-priced. And so, going forward, when people hit 65, it will be mandatory, but even for those who had the option, there was a huge shift in enrollment, and that shift in enrollment had, had that substantial impact on our, on our liability, so.
Just wanted to commend the city for finding this option that was going to be more attractive and allow us to reduce this liability.
Thank you. That's one of those ones that was a win for everyone, the retirees got, you know, they have to pay a portion of it as well. So they saved money, we saved money, we reduced our liability, and everyone was happy, so we like those when they happen.
Significantly, congratulations.
Thanks. One thing I want to say, because I don't get the chance to do this often, I would really like to thank my finance department staff, their hard work and their professionalism. Without them, successful audits, which is what we just had, would not be possible. And I also want to say that it's been a pleasure to work with Mr. Conrad and his staff, and we had what I think was a successful transition from, from our prior audit staff to this one. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to him, and he can hit the highlights, and we'll be back to talk to you after the Finance Commission pulls it apart. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Cindy, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. This is the annual comprehensive financial report. The term "comprehensive" means that there's an introductory section and a statistical section in it. The rest of it is an annual financial report, like you would find at any place else. It has to be a comprehensive annual financial report in order to go for the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, which it has been submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for that award. So, we are pleased to, to have that. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the contents of this. As I mentioned, it has to have an introductory section, so that section is the transmittal letter, you'll see your organizational chart, you'll see pictures of everyone in, in that introductory section. And then you'll see, after the introductory section, you'll see the independent auditors' report. We have a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, if you will, with respect to the, the financial statements. Included in that report is an emphasis of a matter that includes the adoption of GASB 68, or, excuse me, 67. GASB 67 is a governmental accounting standards board principle that relates to pension plans, and it relates to disclosures and presentation of disclosures for pension plans. It is a precursor for GASB 68, which will be adopted by the city this coming year. 67 requires the disclosures with regard to how pensions liabilities are determined, if you look at it from the perspective of a balance sheet approach. Historically, both OPEB and pensions have been shown as a liability only if you have not shown contributions equal to what the actuary says. More of a, just, what does the actuary say you need to contribute this year? How much do you have in a separate trust? As Cindy mentioned, you're looking at a trust for OPEB, because you don't have a trust for OPEB, anything that you have set aside, even if it's, if it's, even if you did set aside, if it's not in a trust, it's still shown as a liability. What is going to happen with GASB 68 is the pension, they're going to look at it on a balance sheet approach, so they're going to say, "Okay, how much do we owe all of the participants in the pension plans? What is the present value of that versus what kind of assets do we have in investments in the, in the pension plan? So what are our assets in the pension plan versus what are we ultimately going to owe?" The difference between those two numbers is going to be shown as a liability. That's a different perspective than what we've had in the past. Doesn't necessarily mean you're in a better or worse financial position, it's just a different perspective. So, what GASB 67 has done, and this year, and what you'll see with all the, these disclosures that we have in the financial statements related to it, is it'll show you the liability under that new perspective. And that, that perspective will be recorded on next year's financial statements.
Is that the pension or the OPEB?
For the, for the pension. Two years from now, though, OPEB will follow probably the same path. So what Cindy was mentioning for the OPEB, those numbers that she was mentioning are, will be the focus under the new method a couple of years from now. Right now, they're disclosed, and right now, you're, for OPEB, you're, you're showing a liability to the extent you don't have trust funds set aside to, to pay for what the actuary said to contribute. In the future, OPEB is going to look at, how much do we owe the, the people under OPEB? What's our separate amounts that we have, and then what, what's the liability, same as the pension. So that'll, that's all changing, it's perspectives. It's just like a city council meeting, the governmental accounting standards board has a board, they listen to perspectives, and they adopt, they adopt standards, and they're looking at it differently as we, as we move forward. So this year, you'll just see the disclosures for GASB 67. Next year, you'll see things recorded under GASB 68 for the pension. And then meanwhile, the governmental accounting standards board is still deliberating the other post-employment benefits standards, and we expect those to be finalized before too long here, and then, and then they'll have a date in which to implement. But they'll follow the pension standards very closely. After the independent auditors' report, you'll see the management discussion and analysis section, and that goes through an analysis of your financial statements. You're in good, good financial position, as, as it says in the, in the MDNA. Subsequent to that, you'll have the financial statements themselves, you have the entity-wide financial statements and fund-level financial statements, followed by the note disclosures to the financial statements. I had mentioned the, the pension disclosure note, and that's in Note 14. Note 14 includes the OPEB as well as the pension, so that's something you might want to take a look at. There are other notes in there as well with regard to the FEMA, what you're going through with FEMA and the, and the state in regard to that. There's a number of reports that follow the financial statements, you'll see the compliance and internal control reports. Because this is a government entity, by statute in the state of Florida, we are required to have the audit conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. Government auditing standards require internal control and compliance reports. In addition, because you have grants that exceed a certain threshold, which is $500,000 for state and federal purposes, you have grant audits, or what we call "single audits." So you'll see the single audit reports in the back, A133 Auditor General, 10.550 reports, and those will show you reports with respect to the, the results of our grant audits. They were clean reports as well. So you have unmodified clean reports with regard to your compliance and single, single audit requirements. Finally, there's a report after that that deals with investment compliance, that's a new report this year, used to be part of the, the Auditor General Report. And there's an Auditor General Report back there as well, which is statutory requirements, requirements of the Auditor General. Nothing in there, we have one comment back there, you'll see, but nothing in there that is, is an issue, no, no unusual items or anything. And the investment compliance report is a clean report as well. So you'll see all those reports in the back, and then of course, you have your statistical information. Couple of pages in the statistical information, I believe is page 147, 148, are pledged revenue, which are for your electric and your water and sewer, so you'll see where you stand on your, your pledged revenue coverage for those. Going forward, in addition to what I'd mentioned on GASB 68 and, and the OPEB, we have the uniform grant requirements, which are not GASB, they're not the accounting, but they're in more the audit world, and they're, they're more of the, your grants. So as, as you receive federal grants, the, the Office of Management and Budget in the, for the United States, has, has changed a number of things with respect to grants. We now have administrative requirements, cost principle requirements, and audit requirements under one super circular, instead of a whole bunch of different circulars. And as part of that, they've changed some of the administrative requirements, they're trying to get more clarity, more uniformity. They've changed some of the pre-award analysis, more risk assessment, they've changed some of the, the cost reimbursement guidelines, there's a number of changes in there, as well as changes with respect to the audit requirements that are going to be going forward. So those are things we have to pay attention to, that, and that Cindy will be paying attention to, or is paying attention to with respect to the grants. So those things are current. In addition, there's a whole lot of other things that keep us up late at night as we, as we, you know, are looking at changes that we need to, to deal with. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
We've got a lot of confidence in the way that our financial budgeting and, and reporting and everything is done, it's very, very well done. Do you have any, any, any sort of financial goals that you think that we should be aiming at? I mean, is there some things that we could improve on that you would, you would see, or that, that are, that are weak points, that are, that are issues that you might want to point out to us?
Well, I think, you know, if you look at your ratios, you're, you're in good shape with respect to your financials. Of course, your electric is always something that, and I know you're paying very much attention to, that's very critical to make sure that it's taken care of, and I know that's, that's very important. And I know the FEMA, you know, since working hard at that, trying to, you know, settle that and get that taken care of. So those are a couple of big financial matters, but overall, the city's in good shape.
Just wanted to thank you and your staff, and this was your, your first audit here in the city of Vero Beach, and really appreciate the effort and coordination with our city staff as well.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well, I think you got a good, good thumbs up on this one, and I'm sure Cindy and her, and her crew can do their happy dance that the caffer's now over. They broke you in? Until next year, right? Mr. Conrad, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just as a comment, usually transitions from one auditing firm to another for a city is pretty rough.
Yes.
And Cindy would ever so often be in my office with tears in her eyes, but we would correct that, wipe them up a little bit, and she would get back with the auditors, and really, the transition went extremely well. We look forward to the next few years working with the firm, because I think they have some very skilled folks that are helping us in working through the process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schefrath is not on, is not here, so we'll skip that and go right to public comment.
I'm David Hunter, 3702 Eagle Drive, Mayor Winger, Vice Mayor Kramer, and city council members, and Mr. Common and O'Connor, greetings to all of you. And I really just wanted to come here and give you some good news for a change. Most of the time, you know, when I've been here, it's to report that there've been some problems out there in the local community. And the efforts that you all have been making over the past four months or five months are starting to show up as positive results. And also, I should thank Chief Curry and his team for what they are doing now in the realm of enforcement of our city zoning code. This has been a tremendous improvement in the ability to effect the enforcement actions. We're starting to see some results with the new $500 fines. I understand that there have actually been a few written, and that some of those writings of fines have produced already some measurable results, such as people that were illegally advertising their properties for weekly rental have now changed them to monthly rentals, which is one of the things we all hoped to see. If people stop advertising on the websites for weekly rentals in areas that are not allowed, which is in the city of Vero Beach residential areas, then a lot of this problem will go away. Also, 32963, Meg Loughlin and Lisa Zainer wrote an excellent article, which quoted some of our city officials, and managed to bring attention to the wider public that we're not tolerating this kind of activity in our Vero Beach city area. So, anyway, I just want to say, for a change, congratulations to all of you for the efforts you're making, and that this is not the end of the battle, it needs to keep going, we need to keep after it. People need to know clearly how they can report when they see these short-term rental violations. That would be helpful to clarify in coming weeks, a better reporting system, a better tracking system, so that we can follow the progress of shutting down these activities. So anyway, that's all I had to say. I've got to unfortunately run over to the county commission meetings, because they're holding some discussions on this very topic today. So, thank you very much for your...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Come back at each time with good news.
Further public comments? About any topic, really. Okay. We'll go ahead, you guys want to take a break, or you want to? Okay, let's just go ahead to the consent agenda, is there, I guess there's only one item here, isn't there?
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Well, that was an easy one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing, we're going to go ahead and, I'm going to go back to my normal routine of having Tammy read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, abandoning the east one half of Lot 24, Block 22, Royal Park, Plat Number 4, 584, Royal Palm Place, as recorded in Plat Book 5 at Page 30 of the public records of St. Lucy County. Said lands now lying and being in Indian River County, Florida, retaining a utility easement, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date.
This, Mr. Vice Mayor, what we're doing here, and this is the second time being on the agenda, we're abandoning it right away because we have no use for it. If you look at the map, you'll see where it dead ends, but we're retaining utility easements for utilities. Therefore, the property owners will now own that, that ground, and will maintain it.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Saying none? Does the council have any comments on this, or a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Ms. Vok, would you call the roll?
Mr. Roll?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Okay, the item number two is quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial. So we're going to have to go through a set of rules to, to get this done. So first thing, I'm going to have to, well, it says the mayor should read this. Dick, do you want to read this?
No, you go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
You know, we've got to follow the rules. In any case, it says, "An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, requesting by IGA Development LLC, amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning district designation of POI, Professional Office Institutional District, to C1, Highway Oriented Commercial District, for property located at 833 20th Street, Lot 22, less the west 18 and 1/2 feet, and parcel 121, less the northerly 20 feet, Gifford Estate subdivision, containing .88 acre, more or less, providing for an effective date requested by the Public's Work Director." And just for clarification, I'm just asking, is IGA Independent Grocers Association?
I always known as that. I don't know. You'd have to ask that. I don't think it is. But you're right, I was...
I was just thinking of putting a grocery store or something. But in any case, my apologies. Mr. McGarry, go ahead.
Thank you.
It really wasn't the Public Works Director.
Yeah.
You could have Monty. He's just jumping to get...
We'll need to have the clerk swear any witnesses.
That's exactly right before we start.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And is there any disclosure by any council members of any previous communication?
No.
Okay. I'm going to make sure I go through this. So we have to charge as custody of exhibits by city clerk, all exhibits. These are all done properly? Okay. Well, I guess we go ahead with staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, I'm Tim McGarry, the Director of Planning and Development. The applicant, IGA Development LLC, is requesting rezoning of approximately .88 acre property located at 833 20th Street from POI, Professional Office Institutional, to C1, which is Highway Oriented Commercial. And we're showing you, if you look at the screen, your screen shows you the location of the property is currently vacant. To the east and north of the property, properties are zoned C1 with a mix of retail and office uses. And also, the McDonald's restaurant is to the southeast of the property. To the south of the property, the properties are zoned mixed use. Those properties are vacant. To the west, properties are zoned POI and included in office residence and vacant land. The property is served by full service of city utilities. It is located on the eastbound segment of State Route 60, which is classified as urban principal arterial. The 2013 traffic report from the Indian River County indicated an average annual daily traffic volume around 8,600 vehicles per day, which is well within the level of service standard D, which is over 30,000 vehicles per day. In reviewing any proposed zoning, it's useful to compare the uses allowed in the current zoning versus the proposed zoning and the development standards. The most significant difference between the two is that POI allows no retail uses and only limited personal services. C1 allows a wide range of commercial use, non-residential uses, including general retail and services and transit residential, as we call hotel motels. The C1 has much more liberal setback requirements than the POI. I'd like to briefly go over the staff report and the analysis. We did a full documentation in the report, so if you have any questions, you can ask me. First, the justification. The applicant states that it's seeking to rezone the property so that it may be able to combine with the property which it owns immediately adjacent to it to properly develop that site. Currently, that site has an uncompleted office building, which never received a certificate of occupancy, and it's been like that for numerous years. Also, the proposed zoning is consistent with the future land use designation, which is mixed in our future land use plan. The staff has concurred with this justification that the zoning is needed to accommodate the development of the adjacent property. The staff's review, consisting with policies of the comp plan, we find it consistent with two of the pertinent policies, including 1.15, which indicates that C1 is one of the zoning designations allowed under the mixed designation. There are seven other standards we looked at in the code that the proposed zoning meets each of these standards. I'll just go over briefly a couple of the important ones. Compatibility with the surrounding area, the properties directly to the north and east are already zoned C1. Moving C1 to the west would align the C1 zoning directly with the zoning directly across the street. The changed conditions, rational applicant for the zoning to provide sufficient for developing the lots it owns abutting the property, the subject lot. This property has never received a CO and is too constrained for any reasonable use. This would help make some reasonable use of that existing property. The maintenance, the level of service uncertainty is not an issue there. We did look at, we normally have traffic studies done. These are very conceptual, because this is conditional concurrency. When a site plan comes in, they're much more detailed. But basically, we looked at the most intense use that you could do in POI, and we consider was a drive-in bank with some office versus a fast food restaurant in a C1 district. And basically, there's 600 trips per day difference between the two. So clearly, as I pointed out, the level of service standard right now is not a problem. Orderly development, the maintenance of orderly development patterns, the proposed rezoning is a logical expansion, C1 zoning along State Route 60, and would align, as I said before, with the C1 zoning directly across the street. Based on these findings and as documented in our staff report, we recommend approval of this report. On March 19, the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval of the request based on the staff findings and recommendations. So unless you have specific questions of me or the applicant, we'd open it up to hear...
Well, hold on. My instructions tell me we've got to go ahead and hear witnesses, and then the applicant, and then we'll go through the proceedings.
Well, the applicant, I've talked to the applicant. Unless you have specific questions, they don't feel they need to make a presentation. So they're here...
The applicant is in the room?
Mm-hmm.
I need to hear from you. Is it okay? We go ahead and...
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I hear it from you.
You are literally bowing.
Okay. All right. So I guess we'll go ahead. I guess we don't have a lot of problems here, so we'll open it up to the council.
Mr. Kramer, I have a question. If you go immediately west of this parcel, I believe there are two houses that have been used as a halfway house. Is that correct? Well, on the corner, there is a veterans thing for transitional for vets, but right next to it, there's an office right next to that property. Right next to it, to the west of it? To the west of it, yes. You say there's a finance office. So is it currently zoned C1 to the west of it? No, no. To the west is zoned POI. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
But you'd mentioned that he was going to join the property? Has he joined it to the east?
Yes, he owns the property directly to the east, and that's zoned C1 right now. Okay? And that's the vacant. He would expand it to include this property.
Questions?
Nope.
I think generally speaking, this corridor is one that's underutilized, and commercial development probably is a good thing along it, quite frankly. I mean, if you go the next block farther down, there's a vacant lot on it. This whole area down in that mid, really needs some good reinvestment in there. It really, part of it is the regulations, but such, there's a big three-acre POI lot in there that really could do something, that would really help that neighborhood. And I don't think further office development is exactly what's needed. There's some other things. So that's something to look at when we get in. We're doing our comp planning and that kind of stuff.
Yes, I agree with your comment there.
Any other comments? I would go, I believe at this time, we would go ahead and do a motion.
Are there any public...
Yeah, is there any public comment, or does the applicant have anything? Well, I guess we're going to be making a motion to grant the application as the facts are substantial and present.
I submit.
So move.
Second.
Second. Before we call the roll, I want to make sure with our attorney, we did everything correctly?
I think you're good.
Okay. Ms. Vok.
Mr. Roll?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Thank you, city council. Just as a comment, because the comp plan has come up twice, Tim and I are working together, which we are probably going to hire some professional expertise outside the city on a per-hour charge type in order to facilitate getting this plan going. This will not be an employee of the city, but through contractual agreements. Because as you can see, I mean, twice today, comprehensive plan has come up. Obviously, we need to get that project off and running. And so Tim has identified where we can find specialties that can help us, and I think in the general area of Vero Beach.
Great. All right. Thank you, Tim. Resolutions? Looks like we don't have anything there. And so, Ms. Vok, your matters.
Okay. I just have one item. We have an opening on our police pension board, and we do have an application from Ms. Amy Wyder, who would like to serve on that board.
And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Wyder. She's had 10 years of experience administering the police pension. I think she'd be a great asset to that board.
But I have a question, Mrs. Turner. The fact that she's been serving this pension board, and now she's going to be... I'm reading her application, police pension board. I have served as a public pension plan administrator for the past 10 years. Therefore, I have, I have, I can't read the word, experienced certification required. I just wonder, Mr. Comment, if that's some sort of a conflict? In other words, if you had been doing the administration, and now your supervisor is asked something that is a good idea or not a good idea? It's just a question.
Well, I don't think she has any ethical issue with that or any legal issue. I think it's up to the council if you want to appoint her or not. The council points certain number, and then the police officers pick somebody, and this is one of those that's governed by state law, and I just don't know of a conflict at this point.
And there are five on this board. Is that correct?
Total, yes.
Okay. If you don't see any conflict with it, I mean, it's a little bit of a red flag, quite frankly. Because if you've done the administration, if something wasn't proper, and now you're supervising it, you know, it...
I could see, yeah.
Yeah, I can go along with it, but I just, I thought it had to be questioned.
Good point taken.
She's not a recipient of any of that pension money, though?
No.
Okay.
All right. I'll second the motion then.
Okay. A further comment? Saying none. This is all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr....
Oh, I have a question for the city clerk.
Oh, my apologies. Go ahead.
Okay. I was looking at our May 21 special call. Is that going to be a city council meeting up here, or are we workshopping as people talk to us about the budget?
That is totally up to the city council. I think it worked out really well when you had your workshop, so you can certainly sit at the table.
Would you rather sit up here?
I would rather be at the table doing workshop, but I just want to clarify so that it's advertised and we know what's going on.
We'll advertise it as workshop slash special call meeting if votes are necessary.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. O'Connor?
First item is the Indian River County Lagoon Coalition. You have in front of you, and we're asking for a vote of the council, an agreement that would really join cities together in a 501(c)(3) that would allow us to have representation and make requests for representation on the Lagoon Council. And as you know, right now, the county has chosen not to do that, and we would be doing it as a group of cities. We do not know the terms and conditions of that yet. We do have Mr. Richard Gilmore in the audience that I think has attended several of those meetings and can give you sort of an update. But this has been developed through the attorneys of really the four cities. Indian River Shores has not decided if they're going to join or not, but I believe that the other three cities, including us, if the council goes along, would be more or less the coalition that would take place. But again, this is really to put us and bind us together as cities and then make our request accordingly. Mr. Gilmore, do you have any comments that you might want to...
Sure. And just to add, you were providing backup, the actual Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program interlocal agreement. That's what the group would be participating in with a representative from the Lagoon
Right. Yeah. Vice Mayor Kramer, Mayor Winger, and council. I went to the last meeting, been to just about every meeting for the last seven months, and the work plan is out for this year. They received $600,000, and there was only 14 entities, cities and counties, that requested grants. And unfortunately, Indian River County wasn't one of those entities. There was $64,000 that went begging. They had $64,000 more to actually give out that wasn't actually requested. So, you know, I can't answer why they didn't request it. We did. We requested a grant for oyster mats, and we were granted $24,000 for our oyster mat project. So I think it's important that if in lieu of the county's representation, that the cities get together and request a seat on that council just for that reason. Instead of 600,000, they're going to have 1 point, probably 1.6 to give out this next cycle. So there'll be more projects that they can fund, and they're really looking to take that money and leverage it and leverage private funds. So it's just the beginning. And it's very exciting seeing something like this that is getting off the ground, because one of the commissioners, Doug Daniels from Bellicia County, is, has connections with some attorneys that do private, you know, planning for fiscal planning where people have a lot of money and they want to give it to some entity. They can do planned giving and help the lagoon and write it off their taxes. So if we can use the public money and kind of leverage private money, maybe instead of 2 million, we can have 4 million or 6 million or, you know, it's going to take a lot of money to fix the lagoon.
Yeah.
And it's going to be a long process. So I think that there's great value in joining cities together, because every time you sit at a table with other commissioners, other council members, mayors, vice mayors, there's an exchange of information. And you guys have valuable information we can use. We have valuable information about what we're doing for the lagoon, the testing that we're doing on all of our outfalls. I think that's probably proprietary in Florida. I don't know of any other city that's doing, you know, active testing on every outfall of their city and charting it to see what they're actually putting in the lagoon. But I think that, you know, we'll have a good chance of getting a seat on the Indian River Lagoon Council, but it's not going to be a slam dunk. It's going to be a slog. Each commission has to approve it. It has to go back to each commission. And that's irregardless of whether it's us or whether really, right now, the county changes course and says, oh, we think we rather, we want to go in. It's going to have to be the same process for either entity. So part of the changes, I think, that Mr. Comment made and was talked about with our attorney was, in case the county does want to come in, then we would just basically bow out. And as long as we have representation on that board, that's what we're happy about. But I think the coalition has value, even if down the road, the county would opt in, I still think it would have value, because we can track what they're doing, and we can make sure that they're requesting funds for Indian River County. So that's...
When you do request funds for the Indian River County, would you do a joint thing? Or would each department or each city have their own project that they would request grant for? Or how would you do that?
Well, actually, it's the staff that evaluates the program. In other words, each city would get together and put their own stuff together as far as, you know, what projects you'd like to have funded. And then I think the way I would envision it is we would meet before the Indian River Lagoon Council would meet, and we would kind of prioritize our projects and say, well, this is kind of our take on what we'd like to see done. We'd like to get them all founded, of course, but our priorities are this, you know? And then pass that along to staff, and then staff makes the recommendations. They bring it back to the whole council, and then there's, well, there would be eight. There would be eight people voting on it. There would be four commissioners, one representative from our county, and then the EPA, the St. John's Water Management, and also South Florida Water Management. So there'd be five elected officials and three department heads on there voting, and that's kind of how it works.
I thought the total amount was sort of a million, 200,000 or something like that?
No, actually, it's 2.2.
2.2?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Coming up. And it would be, that's if every county was represented. It would be 250,000 from the counties right now. Right now, it's 200,000. 500,000 St. John's, 500,000 from South Florida Water Management District. Right now, it's 600,000 from federal EPA and 250 from the state EPA. So you add it all up, it's like 2.2.
I wanted to go over a little bit of the protocol, and Wayne has been involved in writing this. In fact, it started with your city attorney and moved to ours and has gone back and forth. I think it's imperative that we do this, and I think the agreement we have in front of us is a good one. But for the public, what we would be talking about, as I understand it, and Richard or Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, is we would split the $50,000 between the three cities, or if Indian River Shores joins us, the four. And then we would have a group behind where this city council, your city council, and so on, would send someone, they would, with the instructions that would come from the city council to the group. And then the group would have one person going, who would actually be the representative and the member on the coalition. Do I have that roughly right, Richard?
Yes, it would mirror the county. In other words, with the county, they have a representative and an alternate, just like we sit on a lot of the boards. We have a member and an alternate. And it would work the same way, and I presume that we would structure it so that the chairman would be the member and then the vice chairman would be the alternate, you know? And so if one person couldn't meet it, go to the meeting, then somebody else, you know, the vice chair would be able to go.
So in our Vero Beach, small little Vero Beach world, in effect, this would be another commission appointment annually. In other words, we would appoint one of the five of us to be the representative who would take forward to the group of three or fours, the case may be.
Right. And right now, it's in the formation stages, so they're meeting every, you know, they're really trying to get everything together. They don't even have a bank account yet. So really, they're hoping to be formed by October 1st. And quite frankly, I mean, it's probably going to take that long before we would have, you know, their permission to have a seat. I'm thinking it's going to take probably the whole summer to try to get them all to agree to either seat us or Indian River County as another entity.
Or nobody, is the case.
Or nobody, yeah. It takes unanimous consent, so, you know, it's an uphill, it's an uphill push.
But the concept is, then, that the three cities with one representative would represent Indian River County until such time, or if there is such a time that the county would prefer to have the seat, which is all spelled out in the interlocal, I think, adequately. I have one other procedural question. Has Felsmer's city council and has Sebastian City's council passed, or when will they look at the interlocal we're looking at today?
We've passed this identical interlocal. We passed ours, then we passed yours. The one that came back from, and I guess if Warren Dill looks at it and changes a word, or we'll pass that one, so. But I've talked to Jason, and he's going to bring it to his council, either the first meeting, which I think is, I'm not sure if they're the first Thursday and the third Thursday, I think they're first and third Thursdays, or it could be the second and fourth, but I'm pretty sure, he said it would be either the first meeting in May or the second meeting in May. So my report to the Indian River Lagoon Council last week was that I believe that by June, the first meeting in June, we should have everybody that's going to be on board aboard, and we would be able to, at that time, you know, formally request a seat by the first meeting in June. They've canceled the May 15 meeting, so I guess to maybe address an earlier question, I think that normally a board like this would meet maybe quarterly. I don't think it would be that intensive, certainly in the formation where they're at right now. They're trying to meet every couple of weeks and at least every month to try to get, you know, a bank account and try to hire a director and hire staff and get everything up and running. Put out a RFP for location, where are we going to meet? But, you know, they don't have a sense of urgency in that they're looking at October 1st. They'd like to have everything up and running and director and the whole shebang off and going.
Mr. Kramer, when you get far enough along, I'd like the honor of making the motion to accept the Indian River County Lagoon Coalition. And this is a side comment, that is a motion. The side comment is, I think that we should entrust Mr. Gilmore to be our advocate to, you know, get it accepted. He's been carrying the ball, and I think he's doing a good job, but that's just an opinion.
If we can help in any way, let us know. Seriously, it is great.
We have a motion?
Well, do you need public comment?
And stop for that some discussion, please.
I know, I know. I'm not going to close it off. Ms. Turner, do you have some comments?
I do, Mr. Kramer. In looking at the overall agreement for the coalition itself, I mean, under authority and powers, the first item is the power to hire personnel. Right now, I think everybody's looking at all these dollar signs, oh, well, yeah, we got to go and get, you know, get our piece of the dollar, but we already know at least a quarter of the current budget's going to be spent on personnel and hiring directors, et cetera.
May I respond to that? Okay. Right now, you're right, about 600,000 is going to go. When you have a startup, that's about what it's going to cost to get the thing off the ground. Now, right now, they have three personnel that are paid for by St. John's. So there's probably 300 or 400,000 that's being absorbed by St. John's Water Management District we're not seeing. And they're actually, they're not requesting any of that money, but about 30 or 40,000 for administration purposes for the last year. So all the 600,000 that came down from the federal is pretty much being funded.
On page six of that agreement, it says, "Any and all executive administration ministerial powers may be delegated to committee or to the executive director." Once again, there, my concern is transparency, that we're, you know, we're setting up this, another bureaucracy, and now we can be administering these things in all different little groups without full transparency. And I guess I still have a fundamental problem with having these agencies that prepare the regulations for our environment, also provide the permits, are going to have another voting voice on here. I think cooperation within the lagoon is vital. It's great. I mean, Treasure Coast, the regional planning, we've discussed with some of the other elected representatives what we're doing on step programs, sharing those things. Yeah, undoubtedly, there's a great to be done with cooperation. I supported the lagoon with a fertilizer ordinance back in May of 2013. I asked our Public Works to quantify the projects we're doing and, you know, how much nitrate are we doing? How cost effective are these projects? And I think we've made great strides in that. But setting up another bureaucracy, do you have any idea how many nonprofits exist now within this region for the lagoon?
Well, I don't know of any that have $2.2 million to put into the lagoon. That's one of the problems. You can have a lot of nonprofits, and you can want to do a lot of good things, but unless you have the money behind you, you're not going to do those good things. And that's the idea. 600,000 is going to go the first year probably for administration. That's if they have to pay for a place to meet. That's, in other words, well, if we have to pay for a meeting place, we have to buy this, but a lot of these things can be given in kind. So I'm not so sure that it's actually going to come out to that, but the funding, keep in mind, is 2.2. So you're going to have, instead of 600,000 to leverage another 600,000, you're going to have 1.6 to leverage another 1.6. So instead of doing 1.2, you're going to be doing 3-point whatever for the lagoon next year. That's the bottom line.
You know, I have a comment about this, Ms. Turner, about this. The reality of it is, we're on the outside looking in, in what probably is the biggest problem that we have in Indian River County, the life of the lagoon. We're on the outside looking in. Last year, we didn't get any money. I can't see that a third of the $50,000 that we won't get 17,000 or whatever that comes to by participating in this. We're advocates to be led into this. Now, I can read through the agreement that Mr. Fielding and others have worked on, and I might rate it differently, but I am interested in doing whatever is necessary for the lagoon, and we're reaching from the outside, trying to be part of it, and I believe that any money we spend or any limitations will be paid back many, many, many folds. Nothing's perfect, but I support the effort.
Is there any further comment?
I just, I want to say that it's unfortunate that the county isn't participating, but at the same time, I think it's opened up a very unique opportunity for us as cities to work together and to have the lagoon as a concentrated effort, because these other water management districts have other responsibilities as well, and this is a very specific concerted effort on the lagoon, and we can work up and down the river to help. And I really appreciate all the effort that Sebastian has put forth in this, and I appreciate all of your effort personally at attending these meetings and informing us and bringing this all together. I think it's, I just, thank you so much.
I agree completely with you. Absolutely, yeah.
Just a quick question. Sebastian got some money for their oyster reef, is that, how much was that?
24,000. The total package is 24,000. Most of that came from the, most of those funds were coming from the license plate fee. They get 100, I think 125,000 comes in from the license plates, you know, the Love Your Lagoon license plate or whatever. That goes into the NEP, and that's where our funding came from. They ran out of funds, and they said, well, we've got some extra funds here from the license plate. Let's fund it, that project.
Did that come through the decision process with the Indian River Lagoon Council?
Yeah. That came, that was what they voted on last week.
And you had a list of all the different projects that they had voted on. Just in your opinion, does it look like it's pretty much really distributed evenly across the geographic area it represents?
Well, yeah, I think it is. Geographically, of course, Brevard County is so humongous. I mean, 75 miles on the lagoon is Brevard. But you have Marine Resources Council got 69,000 for Indian River Lagoon program, education coordination. Brevard Zoo got 69,000 for community outreach, restoration monitoring of intertidal oyster reefs in the Indian River Lagoon. University of Central Florida preparing Titusville for the future, developing a shoreline management plan, and constructing a shoreline restoration pilot project. They got 40,000. Brevard County Natural Resources Management Department got 32,000. Florida Department of Environmental Protection Aquatic Preserve got 53,000 for Indian River Lagoon shoreline restoration project.
But you don't...
St. Lucie County got money. Volusia got money. Cape Canaveral Scientific, Indian River State College got 45,000. They matched it with a project partner match of 60,000 for optical techniques utilizing drones to characterize water quality in Indian River Lagoon, so.
But still, where's the criteria for cost effectiveness of those funds, you know, and return on investment? That, I mean, you're going, you know, spending these funds, and we're actually going to see some returns and improvement in the lagoon.
You know, they had hoped that they'd have more projects to look at rather than just of the 14 projects that they had. Usually, they have many more projects to look at, and they can do a much better job of ranking those. But when they only got 14 and they had money to fund them all, there was, well, and, I mean, whose fault is that? If you don't ask for it, you don't get it.
Yeah, it's our fault.
And our county didn't ask for any.
It's our fault.
And we didn't ask for a baffle box. I wished we had. We might have got money for a baffle box, so, there you go.
Is there a second?
Yeah, we do have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Is there any more comments from the council or from the public?
I would just say, it may, you know, it may turn out that it's administered well, that it's not abused, but I mean, government has this tendency of continuing to grow, you know, that the, it's one of those things that never diminishes the size of it, it just keeps growing and growing and growing. Therefore, my position would still be kind of a wait and see.
My position would be that the lagoon, as we look at it, is dying, you know, damn it, to be, you know, full speed ahead.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, thank you for coming down and visiting us.
My second item is the compliance agreements. The council asked me at the last council meeting to report back what we were doing and to ensure that we're not just granting 90 days across the board to everyone. What we have done is gone back to the way that compliance agreements have been issued in the past. We look at the circumstances of each and individual citation that have given. An example would be, and we've run into some real sort of weird issues here, but an example would be, as we cite somebody on a Friday, we're not asking the people to vacate the property on Saturday and Sunday, but if he does not have another rental or has no other case, then obviously he becomes an infraction the next Tuesday or the next Monday. Another issue that we've run into, we have cottages that are adjacent to a zone that allows for vacation rentals, but they were not zoned properly and have been carrying on since the 1970s. They have made zoning application to change the zone of those particular units. We are not going to do enforcement while that hearing, because to me, that's sort of like an appeal process, while that appeal process is going on. So we're trying to handle each and every individual case as we can. I feel very comfortable. I believe Mr. Hunter was right. The police department has done a very good job in following up. We're looking at these websites. We're contacting the folks that are associated with those. We are issuing the fines. We now have one that may be going to court. We have assigned John Frost to that case on the vacation rentals, and so we will be having the hearings and whatever it takes to go through that process. We feel very comfortable at this particular stage, the way we are handling the situation. And unless there's some change the council would like, we're going to proceed in that direction.
So what you're saying is, you're handling it, I'll use the term ad hoc, and you're keeping the problem, you're going to resolve the problem.
Yes, sir. I don't really like ad hoc, but we're handling it with the Vero type of handling of compliance agreements we have done historically, and we have been able to resolve a lot of issues that way.
Do we have a hearing date for the motion to dismiss? No? Okay.
And the way court time goes, you know, it's glacier time.
Kind of like council time.
Talking about, yeah.
That's right.
The next item, and this one is very, very, Kelly, if you and Rob would come up, please. This is a group of citizens in Vero and the surrounding area that have really come together on a project, and they are going to raise, they have raised over $200,000. The city is a participant.
Please, sure, thank you very much.
The city is a participant in this, in the fact that we're going to be doing some sidewalk. And we worked out with Kelly early on in the process how we would sort of have a joint effort. But again, she's raised in excess of $200,000. But, you know, because we are a city, you have to have a license agreement for Kelly to locate the playground equipment on the city in a city park. That's what you have before you today, is a license agreement that we would like to recommend that the council take action on. But Kelly, if you don't mind, if you could sort of give everybody an overview of where we are.
Sure. I think you have some information in layman's terms about the specific equipment that we're hoping to install. And as Jim said, we're an organization called Go Play Vero, which is a relatively new not-for-profit organization. We're a fund of the Indian River Community Foundation. And about two and a half, three years ago, I and another member approached Rob to find out what we could do about the issue of some of our playgrounds deteriorating and maybe being a little lackluster, for lack of a better way to put it. So we decided that probably the best way for us to do this, in an effort to unite public and private funds, was for us to start this organization and then to appeal to members of our community who felt that, you know, that agreed with us that this need existed. And so that is sort of how Go Play Vero was born. So as Jim mentioned as well, we have been successful in raising over $250,000 in order to make this project a reality. You can see from the renderings, this is not an artistic license rendering, this is an exact replica of what will be installed, what we plan to purchase, and what will be installed at Humiston Park Playground. You should, I believe, in some of the information that Monty's given you, you should see some specific... the information that Monty's given you, you should see some specifics on where each of the pieces of equipment will be laid out. But basically, this is an effort to enhance the playground, make it ADA compliant, wheelchair accessible, to obviously increase the amount of equipment that is currently there. The equipment that's there right now, unfortunately, given the elements, it's probably in, you know, the worst possible place it could be for any, whether it be metal, wood, what have you. The elements are very tough on any type of equipment that's there, and ultimately, the equipment has begun to fail. So, this will be new equipment. Obviously, it'll be more extensive. It'll be equipment that is specific not only to ages two to five, which is what the current equipment is applicable for, but this equipment will now range from two to 12 years old. And also, we will have extensive, additional shade. So, you can see in some of the renderings on that main piece of equipment, what we refer to as sort of the ship. That does have some additional shade on that piece of equipment. But most importantly, if you've ever spent any time at the park and either sat in a swing or pushed someone to swing, it can be, it can be pretty hot and sunny. And so, we're very excited that we were able to, we were able to have a shade placed over the entire new swing set. And you may, you may notice as well, and I'll try to keep it brief. I kind of get worked up when I talk about it, but I'll try to maintain a little bit. Again, for those of us who spend time at the playground with our kids, the swings are always the hotspot, and it's, you know, you've got to wait in line to be on the swing. So, we thought one of the most important things to do would be to increase the number of swings. So, in doing that, we then realized that we had to kind of come outside of the current footprint. So, we created an additional swing area, taking the swings from four swings to eight swings, and we're able to put a shade over that, that entire length of those swing sets. So, so that's basically the gist of it, and we're hoping that you all will approve this and that we can move forward with getting this rolling.
I just have a quick question about the swings. I'm, are you going to have swings with the, like, the saddle swing?
Yes. So, and that is the one area where the renderings are not accurate. A portion of the swings will be what they call toddler swings, and then the other, the other will be for elders.
Okay. Just when you said two, and I was looking at these swings, I thought, oops.
Yeah, no, there's, there's eight, and a portion of them will be designated for toddlers. Yeah, absolutely.
Our share of the funding would come out if approved by the council. The Whitaker Trust, we have about $97,000 in interest that we could use without touching the principal. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000 commitment round numbers. We worked through that, but we have more than enough money in that interest to be able to cover our share.
This is really good effort. You all will be very pleased, very proud of it, yeah.
Yeah, marvelous.
Remarkable, remarkable.
And the cooperation. I'm delighted to, yeah, support it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Kelly, don't forget, there are bricks available. I know we had bricks on the mainland, and now we have bricks on the beach side.
Yeah, so part of the fundraising effort is also engraved donor bricks, and those will be available for purchase until June 1st. Originally, our fundraising deadline was going to be June 1st, and we were fortunate to hit that deadline a little bit early, but we did not want to withdraw the brick purchase for those who'd like to leave their mark at the playground. And the donor brick, the donor brick pathway, so you can understand it, will actually unite both of the playgrounds. So, the swing playground footprint and the turtle playground footprint.
Wonderful.
This is fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thanks. We're excited.
Looks like you've got a fan behind you, too.
About how long will the construction take? Do we have a timeline?
That's something that we just recently discussed. We think it's probably going to be, well, the equipment itself takes about six weeks for delivery. The shade would take about eight weeks. And so, installation, I, the equipment vendor said about two weeks, but I'm just going to say, you know, three to four weeks to be on the safe side.
Great. Is that accurate? Does that what you understand? Okay.
Kelly, also, on the back of the envelope here, it has, on the front, it has some support levels.
Yes.
Some of them are ones that I couldn't deal with. But on the back, it does have the bricks, and I'll certainly participate in the bricks. And I think it's fun to do that, you know.
Yeah, well, we would, we would be thrilled to have you support us in that way. Thank you.
But I guess my point is, the envelope allows you to do that quite easily.
Yes. Yes. And most everything, our website, which is www.goplayvero.com, you can access all that information on that site as well.
That is the location to get your brick, is on the website.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Rob, do you have anything?
Any other questions? Thanks.
Rob Sleazak, Recreation Director, huge fan of Kelly DeLaporta and her whole group. It's an incredible group. I know Jim and I got to meet a number of the people last week, and really friendly folks, people who really care about the community. I can tell you that Kelly and I had a nice, long conversation. It was probably a couple hours long. And to be honest with you, the one thing I saw with Kelly and I see with the community is they, they really do care. And, you know, she puts so much work and effort into this project, and she's not done. That's the other thing that is amazing about this group, too. They're not done. They're looking at other playgrounds and continuing their, their progress. And it means a lot to me. It means a lot to, I know it means a lot to them, and I can't say enough thank yous to them for all the hard work they've put in, and the money, and all the volunteers that have participated, thousands of hours put into this project. And it's incredible.
Mr. O'Connor, are you looking for a motion?
Yes, sir, I am, and that you would agree with the city's participation and use of the Whitaker Trust as the funding source for that. And just as another side comment, remember, we just a couple weeks ago had Leisure Square dedication, and now we're coming across. And so, we do have an awful lot going on in our parks. And as you know, that's been one of the challenges that we in budgeting processes have undertaken. And I think you can start seeing improvements going through in that, in those areas.
Before we get a motion, is there anybody for public comment on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the license and construction agreement as presented to us, and that the funding be from the Whitaker Trust.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, five, all.
That's all I have, unless there's questions from the mayor or council.
I have a question. We, last year, when we were doing the pension and union negotiations, and this year as well, we kept talking about restructuring, some sort of step plan or something, because we have a plan. We don't use it. And it's always been a bone of contention that here's a plan, and we're not moving people along. And so, I was hoping that we could somehow come up with something that includes performance reviews and longevity, and examine whether or not we can implement one, or we shouldn't have one. But I think having these plans sitting out there that we're not using is hindering us every year in these negotiations.
First of all, performance reviews by a union contract really are not workable documents. Those are internal administrative documents where we can evaluate the employee and have the one-on-one. But I have yet to see a union contract that would allow you to do any type of bonus to someone based on that. The second thing, step programs are really based on your time and grade, and they're automatic if you've learned your skill and you've had the time and grade. But we'll be very happy to have HR look at that again.
Because we need to know if we can't, if we can't have it, we can't have it. But we can't just have it sitting out there, you know, all the time, because it, it makes the negotiations very difficult.
We will take a look at it.
Okay.
There's no more questions for the?
Yes, there.
Is this okay?
Yes, sir. Mr. O'Connor, no, you had a mediation meeting last week with Indian River Shores. Could you give us a summary on that and where we are?
Yes, ma'am, I can. We met for a little over two, two hours, and in our discussions, the issue really came up about are we going to be able to, A, meet FPNL rates, and the answer is no. And then the second was, is to sell a portion of our system, the part that's within Indian River Shores to Florida Power and Light. We have agreed to meet with Florida Power and Light and discuss that. As a matter of fact, we tried to make contact and set up a meeting for this week. But unfortunately, the Florida Power and Light officials are going to be out for a couple weeks. And, but we will pursue that and have those meetings. There are some real challenges, and Ms. Amy Brungis and I and Sam Forrest met and sort of hit it at a highlight, very short meeting. It was no negotiations, but we did discuss some of those challenges that would confront us in there. And we do have one little issue, I guess, one of many, but one that is really out front, and that is the stranded cost issue of what the exposure the city of Vero Beach has in going forward. And we would have to try to see if we could, how would we address those, those concerns? The second, and another item that came out of the meeting is that Indian River Shores will pursue their litigation, and on or shortly after May the 16th, will refile their case. We are gearing up for that. We understand what the deal is. They have given us an additional 30 days for our filing, and it was very gracious of them to do. But I think what they were hoping for is that we would have some time to meet with FPNL, at which we will attempt to do before that. But the extra 30 days does give us the time to appeal. So, we are now heading into the area of litigation.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, since I was also representing the city. I made it very clear that at least I would never vote for any agreement, including a partial sale, which would be unfair to any group, whether it's Indian River Shores, or the people of Vero Beach, or the people outside the city. I got an apology. I suppose it was more pro forma than anything, but they came forth with a sheet of paper telling us that if we were to sell between $3 and $10 million, what we could do with the money, which I think was a bit arrogant on their part, quite frankly, we can run our own city, I think, quite nicely. And I would tell you, they should add a zero to that, because the reality is with the stranded costs, the stranded costs are material. And, you know, you can look at it, let me put it to you a different way. I could never support what I view as a short sale, and between $3 and $10 million, or even some multiple of that, is a short sale, whereby we'd get a little bit of money, and we'd strand the remaining people to pay for all the high-cost FMPA power, and we'd strand them with all the obligations over the year. So, I personally would be amazed. You know, I was in a district court in Virginia about 15 years ago, and Judge Johnson said to me, you know, there's an amount of money that solves any problem, and that probably is true. But I don't see that amount of money coming forward to keep our people of Vero Beach and the people in the county whole. I just don't see it coming forward. So, I don't think we should have a great deal of optimism. I will repeat what Mr. Wright said, which is exactly right. We should listen to any, we should have all reasonable conversations and listen to all reasonable offers. And I support his position, but I don't have much hope.
Do we have any estimate of these so-called stranded costs?
No, ma'am, we don't. We have, we have not expended any money, which is another issue that'll have to come up in our discussions with Florida Power and Light, because I will say, Florida Power and Light also understands they're going to be spending resources to address this. And the question is, is what do we anticipate the outcome being? When we, when we both entered into the sale of our system to Florida Power and Light, we both understood that our ultimate goal was to try to sell the system. And so, that's, we did that. In this particular case, there's still some question as to how we would do that transition. And people make light of the fact that we do have a major backbone to our transmission system up there. But that would be an issue that Florida Power and Light, in our discussions, they're very uncomfortable sharing substations, as an example.
You know, the other thing is, if there is some offer, a multiple of the sheet that they, two sheets they put in front of us, it might be worth spending the public's money to hire Mr. Richardson, Bill Richardson, or someone to spend $15,000 or $20,000 to answer your question, Mrs. Turner. But if it's a low-ball number, you know, I personally couldn't support it. And I think that'll be quite obvious, whether it's serious or not. Let me go a different place on you. We've all tried and failed so far to sell the entire electric. And the rough offer from Florida Power and Light was $191 million, if my mind isn't forgetting something, to which later on was added $52 million. So, that's a total of $243 million. And going back to my earlier comment about there being enough money to solve any problem, that certainly wasn't enough money to solve that problem. In other words, what we found was, in the dialogue, that that didn't solve the problem. So, I, going back to this kind of current conversation, I wouldn't want to spend money on some low-ball offer if it sounds like it's reasonable. And I think we all have a gut feeling for some number of tens of millions of dollars, or whatever the case may be, that that sounds like it's worth looking at. We should do what Mr. Wright said, but, and then we would have to take the step of actually determining and answering your question. But that's going to cost money.
You don't believe going into litigation is going to cost you more money, Mr. Wright? I think that's rather naive.
The bad part is, though, we're going to have litigation. Either it's Indian River Shores or Indian River County. So, I think we're going to spend money in that area. And if we did cut a deal with Indian River Shores, I think we could pretty well count on Indian River County having some issues as well. So, you know, and that is a concept in the community, is it's one or the other. And unfortunately, I don't think it is one or the other.
No, I concur with Mr. O'Connor. I, you know, I think it's a very tangled web.
One other question for the city manager. In the OUC contract negotiations, and it's more just a request for, as that gets presented to council, that we see a chart of the wholesale costs, OUC's wholesale cost, under the current, current contract agreement and under the proposed, you know, out to whatever period of time, I guess each agreement ends at a different period of time, but that basic wholesale rate, as well as a line for demand and peak, so we can, you have a comparison.
Apples to apples.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, we're going to have that. I think that was made pretty clear, and he is trying to do that spreadsheet. I am hoping that we will have some document by the beginning of next week, because on the 18th, Mr. Wright will be here, or, excuse me, on the 19th, Mr. Wright will be here to address the city council one more time on this, on that item. And then I presume you all will refer it back to the Utility Commission and to the Finance Commission from that, that point.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Okay. Mr. Kement, just before you get started, I just have one, one quick question, just dovetailing off what we've had here. If the Shores are now officially in litigation with us, is there any words of wisdom that we should be watching our, what we say in public, considering the litigation?
I mean, that goes without saying, anything that's, you know, that's said can be used, you know, against you.
Okay.
Used against the city.
Okay, so alcohol sales.
Okay. Last year, the council, at the urging of several merchants and vendors of alcoholic beverages, requested that the cutoff time period be extended from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., which the council did do. But we, at the council's request, there is in the ordinance a sunset provision, which says on June 15th, that extension to 2:00 a.m. ends, and it reverts back to 1:00 a.m., unless there's another ordinance adopted, and it's either extended or we make it permanent. And that's why we're bringing it to you now. So, we have time to bring you an ordinance, if you so choose, before it expires for, for adoption. And the chief has stuck around in case you have some questions about the effects over the last year.
There are a lot of wheras in this, and it sort of says, everything's been good. Everybody really likes it. Is that, is that the case?
The answer to the question is, I think, yes. And you've got to remember, the county also adopted the 2:00 a.m. So, we're sort of surrounded by the, after we did it, the county did it, so therefore, the impacts are there. But I think they're minimal, and the chief would be able to answer any particulars.
Does everyone have the information that we forwarded? Okay. What we did was, we looked at the last year covering the 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. closure time, and we also allowed for the half hour after that for closing, last call, things like that. And then we compared it, of course, to the previous year where we closed at 1:00 o'clock. So, you'd see that, that last hour from 12:00 to 1:30. And the number- And the numbers aren't that significant. There was 20 calls for service in that time period between the 12:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. prior, and now this past year, 1:00 to 2:30 a.m., there were 34 calls for service. And it was, we looked at four call types, the DUIs, disorderly intoxication, disturbances and noise, just those four call types in that regard. And again, we looked at 13 establishments that you have listed as well. That's most of our establishments, we certainly have others, restaurants, things like that. Again, the numbers aren't that significant. You have maybe one, a little over one call for service more per month than the previous year, so we didn't necessarily object last year. I knew I'd be back here a year later, here I am, and we don't, do not object to continue on with the 2:00 a.m. closure as well.
So the process is, you just need consent to bring it back around the agenda?
We just need direction from council. If you want to make it permanent, and remember, you can always amend the ordinance in the future, and again, revert back to 1:00 a.m., but if you wanted to make it permanent, subject to future amendment, we would bring you back and the, and ordinance basically removing the sunset language from the ordinance.
I would like to see us go ahead and proceed with it. I think at least it's been certainly a boon to the businesses, and consequently, that would be to tax generation as well, and if Chief Curry and the staff do not, are not seeing any great danger or problem or burden on our police force, I'd suggest we go forward.
And it's ironic that the numbers are up a little bit, but it's really small, but we had one of the busiest seasons across the board that anybody can remember, so you had a lot more activity going on.
Our DUIs were actually significantly higher as well, but not necessarily correlating to the establishments as well.
I think, is there a consensus then?
I think we've got a consensus to bring it back around.
Okay.
With a permanent.
Sure, we'll do that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for Mr.?
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, I wanted to mention Lieutenant Patterson, who is one of the couple that are still here. He helped and compiled these numbers, so I wanted to thank him as well.
Great job, thank you.
Also, John, I want to say publicly, thank you very much for handling the historical association. I got a comment, a compliment today on the way you handled that, and evidently put some ladies at ease. Thank you.
If there's no more questions or comments, we'll go right into the individual councils matters. I don't believe there's any old business. And if so, Mr. Winger?
Well, I went to two things. Great many of us went to the first one, which is the Pavilion at Leisure Square, which I think is, was a great celebration, a volunteer effort, and a treasure we have, namely Leisure Square. I'm so proud of all the people that did it. The thing I said at it is that we at city council really don't do anything, we're legislators, and that it had been done by a bunch of folks, and, you know, thank you again for that. I also went to the opening of the Audubon House, which I think is something that I'm proud that we have here. Been to a bunch of other things, but I think I'll let it go with that. Mr. Kramer?
Well, you know, I did attend both the things that you did say. One of the things I did attend, of course, my wife being involved in the Relay for Life, we went to the Relay on Saturday, was actually a really, really great event. I hope this Saturday, the weather is as good as that, but it is a good time, it is a good cause, we hope to see you there this Saturday. One of the questions I wanted to ask council is that last meeting, we had Paul Drettenbach come up and give a presentation for a master plan of the power plant, the utility land there on the river. I guess the next step in this process is to have an RFQ for a, an engineer to do that master plan, but before we can do that, we need to have some guidelines, some goals as to what we want to have. And my thought for starting that would be to have the Recreation Commission talk about this idea as to what they think they would like to see on that land. And the reason I would pick the Recreation Commission is that in the charter, it is to be used for recreation. So I'm actually just asking for the council's idea on that.
I think it's excellent to look at that. I have been sort of pondering and talking to different people about it, too. And if that area ever becomes free, that area ever becomes open, what goes in there could dramatically change what Vero is all about. And what I was, been, have been puzzling with is the process to do it, is the process to look at it. It's Vero Beach that should decide, it shouldn't be the us council or anything like that, and I'm trying to, so I was trying to figure out a neutral party that would be the right one to sort of guide it, and I, and I've been puzzling over that. But it's something that's going to take four or five years, I don't know, a long time to get it done, but it'll dramatically, or could dramatically, change Vero, and it's probably one of the bigger events that Vero could undertake. So it's really got to be done well, with a bunch of thought, and I'm still, I haven't reached a conclusion in my own mind, and maybe the recreation area is the best way, but I haven't reached a conclusion in my own mind about how to do this. I talked to the land trust, they have a few people, they know of a few people that have done similar kinds of changes on the Hudson, where they've taken public property and really done something dramatic with it, that the city approved and the city sort of designed. It's a big undertaking, and it really needs some thought, and I agree that it's something we really ought to be starting, just because it's a long-term event, but I'm just not sure the way, the way you initiate it is my.
Yeah, I'd be glad to talk with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Group and to see what council, I mean, they've obviously worked in many different areas, whether it's looking at revitalizing a downtown area or something else, and see what guidance I can get from that and bring it back to the council.
Okay. Well, I mean, the point is, I think we're just, we need to start somewhere. I mean, I don't care if it goes to all the commissions.
Yeah.
It's the fact that you're doing something.
Yeah.
And getting the ball moving.
And giving an opportunity for the stakeholders to come forward, I mean, Mr. Drettenbach, that was a point he kept hitting over and over again. The more stakeholders you have involved, the more opinions you get from people.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The better this process will be in general, and funding down the line.
Yep.
So I think that's a good idea.
Well, let's, if we can, let's just get people talking about it, and maybe next council meeting, we'll start to see if there is some kind of umbrella group.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Very good idea, very good idea.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yes, I'd like to ask the mayor for the copies of whatever handouts from the Indian River Shores mediation. I didn't, I don't recall seeing anything, and if we could distribute that to council, please?
Yes, I will. There were two sheets of paper talking about the $3 and $10 million, and how we could spend the $3 or $10 million proceeds. I have them, and I'll give them to the city clerk.
Thank you. I'd also like to note, a reading over the Marine Commission meeting, talking about master plans, that once again, they're looking at the waterfront area around McWilliams Park. I think maybe now we'll see a little more cooperation between different groups, but it's, you know, power squadron, rowing, dog park, you know, I mean, it is a very special area, and if we can, you know, maximize its use and enjoyment for all these groups in a cooperative way, I think that'd be great, so.
Ms. Graves?
I wanted to thank Everything Outdoors for their donation of a tree for the Arbor Day planning in Riverside Park. It's so great to have people giving us trees each year, and I also wanted to thank the Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities and our clerk's office and Tammy Vok for holding our ethics training over at the community center. Three of us are now ethical. Certified ethics, and the overall, the overall theme was, when in doubt, when something goes wrong, just fire your city manager, and everything will work out. They just kept referencing, just fire the city manager.
Wonderful. Mr. Old?
I, my big thing has been this planning thing, trying to look forward to way down the road and sort of see what we need to be thinking about now. And I've been, I did a few things, Arbor Day and the Pavilion and things, I thought it was really, it gives you a very good feeling of the city, and the enthusiasm and the care and the diligence everybody takes on keeping it the way it is, it's great.
Hey, let me comment on what Mr. Old said, and throw my oar into the water, to be cliche. I don't know how to do it, Jim, but I think longer-range planning, when we have our next meeting, is something we've got to talk about. In other words, you know, this planning for one year government from those of us that come from someplace else, that, you know, I got my problems with it. I don't know the solution, but I do think we can go further into the future, one way or another. That's just an opinion.
Now, May the 21st, you'll be getting a five-year window, and so in that window, also going to be built-in cost and need for revenue, and you're going to see that, where that crosses. And that'll give you the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to look at long-range planning and how you try to address those, because as you said earlier, and it is a fact, it's a function of money. I don't care how you look at our organization, it really comes down to that. So that will be another issue. And speaking of planning, the airport master plan held its public meeting the other night, had 50 people there, and it was very impressive that you had that many folks that came around, and they'll be making their 60% of the plan done at the council meeting, I think on May the 19th, is what our plan is now, to come to the council, and you'll get to meet the consultants who are doing that master plan, as well as an update as to where they are.
Wonderful. If there's no other comments, we are adjourned.
Thank you.